Thank you Chair Butzner and Board members. So in your board packet, you have a copy of the superintendent's update. Please note it was dated July 13th, which is today, but it of course was written so many days prior to that in order for you to get your packets in advance. And so a lot has been changing as we have moved forward as a school district. I know a lot of people are interested in hearing the structural model for reopening, and we're going to go over that in just a minute. But I wanted to point out a few things. One is the, and probably the most important piece for kids and adults in these buildings, but we have a number of changes within our leadership at different schools. So I'm going to try to remember all of them and I am going to ask Director Larry to chime in if I make an error. So we announced on July 8th that John Hunter is the new principal of South Albany High School. John, of course, comes from Albany Option School, has a history with South, including going there himself as a student. So we are really excited to have John there. He's going to bring a depth of experience, particularly from meeting the needs of all different learners at AOS and working in instructional leadership. We are really excited about that. So welcome to John. We also, in the South Albany moves, we have also moved a former principal Kelly Bussard, who was principal at Oak Elementary School. She has accepted a position as an assistant principal to join the team there at South Albany High School, which means that we had one too many administrators there at South, which means Assistant Principal Richard Shaw. We are going to be moving him into another position and we are still shifting positions around, as you know, very rapidly. So we haven't yet landed his position. I can share that we have other schools experiencing change. So Clover Ridge Principal Elisa Stevens has accepted the job as principal at Lafayette Elementary. So we're really excited to have her there for that move. We also now, of course, had because of this openings at Meadow Bridge Elementary School and at Oak Elementary School. So at Meadow Bridge, we have both a new principal and a vice principal because that's the design for the, for the school. And so our principal there will be Kristi Gill. We're very excited to have Kristi join our team. And then Sue Turner is an internal applicant who is going to be the vice principal there at Meadow Ridge. We're excited to have her there as well. And then we're welcoming Shanda Brown to our district, who has been selected as the principal of Oak Elementary. And I think I did all of the HR things. Thank you. Thumbs up from Director Larry. All right. And then, then I wanted to go in and just talk to you about a few things. One piece that we're working on right now is working with our district nurse Rachel, who has been a tremendous leader throughout this pandemic in partnering with our community partners around issues of tobacco use, sexual health, mental health, and harm reduction for our students and seeing how we and our community partners can bring resources together to provide training and support to both students and district staff. So that's an exciting expansion of our care that we're able to provide to students. We're expanding our nursing care a bit, if you recall in the budget. And we are excited to do that because we definitely saw that need here during the pandemic. We also are, and I'll talk about this just a little bit, working with Albany Boys and Girls Club to perhaps provide some services in a different way than what they have looked like before. That is just in the beginning stages of conversation. So you may have questions about that as well. And I certainly will tell you what I know today, but it definitely will not answer all of your questions. So with that, I think I will go ahead and step on over to share my screen with you. Just a minute. And I'm going to share with you a PowerPoint. Oh, whoops, I have to share the screen first. That hopefully is going to be helpful to all of you and certainly anyone who is watching at home regarding what we are, what our plans look like for next year. So first, just to start out, this presentation is going to give you answers that you've been waiting for and it will lead to more questions to which we may not yet have answers. So please know that our staff are working extremely hard during the summer. Our administrator staff and many of our teachers as well, trying to make sure that we have the best design and options for our families and know that to do that, that takes some time. And it also takes our ability to be flexible and nimble as we see directions from the state kind of ebb and flow. So I appreciate your patience and know that we'll continue to be communicating with you. So our primary concern for students throughout this entire pandemic, just to remind you, has and will continue to be the physical, emotional and mental health of our students. What we have said throughout the pandemic is if our kids know that we care about them and, and that we are wanting them to be healthy young people, then we have done a good job. That's our primary measure. And as we design for fall, we're placing these priorities at the center and we're looking to scientists and health specialists from the Oregon Health Authority and the CDC to inform what we're able to do as we are also looking at what we hope to do. And what we hope to do eventually is something that we can all agree on. We all wish to get students safely into school for in-person education as much as possible. I believe that's a shared community value. I think the, the word safely is an important word for us to keep in mind as we are having, having conversations and debating the models that are shared tonight and the models that may be shared across our state or across the country. That safely into school is our goal and, and in-person education is what we value. What we know is that relationships between adults and students are the most valuable thing in shifting how a student sees themselves as a learner and how they see themselves in the future. And so we want to maximize those opportunities. And when we can't be in person, we want to make sure that the impact between, the impact from the adult-student relationship remains strong. So I'll describe what we're doing there as well. So this summer, this is what we've been doing thus far. We started out in middle, mid-June, right, right when school got out, so early June, with a feedback survey and a number of feedback sessions, community forums with, and community forums that were virtual with our families and with staff regarding spring distance learning, how it went, what could, what could have been better, what worked well, what got in the way. We then, just a couple of weeks after that, started families and staff thinking about, okay, so given that context, what do you want fall to look like? What do you think it should look like? And what are your worries about what fall could look like? Throughout this time, we've been having these weekly superintendent updates. So they started back in June. They have been every Monday, now they're on Tuesdays, sent via school messenger, posted on our district webpage, posted on Facebook, translated into Spanish, trying to reach as many families as possible with weekly updates on the progress that we're making. So, and we have had topics from technology to, to communication that have been a part of those superintendent updates. And there will be another one going out tomorrow. And so taking all, we've taken all of that data and we have used that to create the design that we'll share tonight. Going on, on the timeline, July 20th is an important date because that marks the date that parents will begin to finalize their student learning model choice online via Register. So Register is the precursor to in-person registration. Every single student, every parent needs to get on and register, get onto Register for every student in their home. So if they have three students, they need to go through the process three different times. And we've done some things in Register. We're making some adjustments so that we can gather more information to help us improve our services. One thing that comes to mind is we are going to be doing an income survey to help with nutrition services and making sure that we can deliver the maximum amount of meals to our students as possible. And to get a really, in order to do that, we need a very accurate count of families and their income levels. So that's going to be one of the questions. Another question on that will be, do you intend to drive your child to school every day? Or will they be walking? Are you preferring that they not ride a school bus? We need to know that because as we're planning for our transportation schedules, we need to have a very clear understanding of not just whether or not a lot of students are going to be riding the bus, but specifically which students will be riding the bus. Because as you'll see when, when we talk about the schedules, that's critically important to coordinating our routes. After that Register deadline, which will be in early, early-ish August, we haven't put the deadline out yet, we will kind of coordinate it at the same time, be submitting our plans to our local health authority and receive board approval. So that'll happen before August 10th. Our plans are due August 15th. And so as we're developing our plans, we're in conversation with representatives from the Health Authority and other agencies to make sure that we are still keeping in line with what the Oregon Department of Education is expecting and the Oregon Health Authority is expecting in our plans. And so those plans will be submitted before the 10th of August. And then by August 26th, students are going to receive their cohort, which you'll learn a little bit more about in a moment, and their actual school schedule. And we'll talk a little bit about that. And then school's going to begin in September. One of the questions that is important for the board to consider, and I'd like you to be thinking through this lens as I walk you through this presentation today, is the amount of learning that our education staff need to engage in prior to students returning to school. If you recall, in the spring, we had a sudden drop-off, right? Of one day we were in school and the next day students were at home. So that was the week before spring break and then the week of spring break. And then we stood up distance learning right after spring break. Now, our educators did a fantastic job and could not, they worked so hard and I'm so proud of them. And they would feel a lot more confident if we provided professional development prior to that time around what does it look like to have Zoom chats or Google chats with your students? How do you set that up to maximize student learning? These are the kinds of conversations and learnings that are extremely important and that teachers need to practice prior to working with students. It's not just teachers, though. It's also our instructional assistants who support our students. So when I'm talking about teachers, I am of course talking about the classroom teachers and I'm talking about specialists. So our special educators, our English language educators, those who are, it's very important that they reach students well and that they're able to deliver services of high caliber in order to close any gaps that those students have, be it, be it learning in unique ways or be it with, with language deficits. The other large group of supports that we have in that same area are our, our education assistants. So when you look at our SEAs, we have a really large pool of professional classified staff who do a fantastic job in the classroom and yet haven't received any direct training around how would I facilitate and support students who are at school sometimes or at home sometimes or at home all of the time in order to support their education plans, whether they're in special education or they're talented and gifted or they are in a regular classroom. And literally that training has not happened because we had not known or recognized the huge need that we have for that amount of training. So when staff come back as they're currently scheduled, they have a number of days and Randy can actually say the exact number of days that are for professional learning, but it's very minimal. What I would, what I would state to the board is staff either need to, we need to negotiate with the unions and see if staff would agree to come back a week early. And then we would of course be paying the staff for that extra week. Or we need to consider the student start date and whether we can do some front-loading for students at the beginning of the year so that those first four days after Labor Day, students are engaged. They're engaged with their technology. They're learning how to use it. They have assignments, but it's not teacher-driven assignments on those four days and that they really start the following week. One of those two pieces, I believe, strongly needs to take place because we have so much learning to do. Not a decision to make tonight, certainly something for you to consider as we. And, and Director Larry, can you mention how many, how many days do teaching staff and how many days do classified staff have to engage in professional learning before the start of the school year?
Yeah. By contract, teachers have four paid days prior to the start of school. However, two of those are designated as teacher workdays, which are, you know, teachers directing their own work. Typically, that would be doing lesson planning, unit planning and getting classrooms ready, et cetera. And then two of those days are for staff development, professional development activities designed and conducted either by the district or by the individual buildings. For classified employees on their typical calendar for SEAs, there would be only one day that week that would be paid and that's typically getting them into the building and doing some orientation and professional development, typically at the building level, but only one day there for classified employees.
So given that, I just believe strongly in instructional quality for students is based upon professional readiness. And I believe we have, part of the reason I came here to GAPS is I believe we have some of the very best educators and professionals and classified staff that I've, I've had the privilege to work with. People have huge hearts, have really strong minds, are constantly learning. And this is an opportunity for them to dive in and really learn how to do things well and then deliver. Or it's an opportunity for them to potentially start feeling not as confident as really they should be and never feel that they have their full footing underneath them. And so that's something I'd like the board to be thinking about.
Superintendent Goff, this is, this is Kim. I know you mentioned that we didn't necessarily need to decide on it tonight, but just looking at the schedule, our next board meeting would be August 3rd. And is that something that we would need to be prepared to decide at that meeting because of timing of needing to either negotiate something with the union or whatnot? And is that enough time to do that and have everybody have a decision in a timely enough manner?
Yeah. I think, so complex question, multifaceted. So first, I would say ideally, so we have this on the agenda tonight at the end of your agenda, revisiting the student calendar. And that's why it's on the agenda as a second reading because you've already decided on a student calendar. So you could in fact have that conversation and make that decision today. I, I do think August 3rd, if the decision is yes, we believe staff need more time and we aren't willing to, to start students later, then I think it will be extremely late both for negotiating with unions and for people to, this is less so this year, right? For people to rearrange their schedules because they're, they're probably not going very many places at the moment, but certainly to negotiate with the union. So that's a consideration for the board tonight when we get to that item on the agenda. I can't see you, so if there are other questions, it's great just to speak up. Thanks. All right. So as I shared earlier, we've been holding virtual meetings and, and we have some schedule, additional scheduled and more will be coming online to inform our plans for fall of 2020 and to communicate out as we're developing, okay, this is what we're thinking. How does this hit? What are the questions you have? So we have had a couple of staff meetings already. We will have another one this Wednesday where staff can speak to me. And then on Friday, Assistant Superintendent Harland will facilitate a conversation with staff. Staff are welcome to go to one or to both of those meetings. And then we've held many conversations with parents and guardians. So prior to, prior to now, we've had two sessions that were in Spanish, one in June and one in July. We had one that was focused on parents of students in special education. We did not give those parents enough lead time regarding that meeting. So we have scheduled, and which is, which is a definite shortcoming in our planning. And so we had attendance, but not nearly the attendance that we had hoped. So we have scheduled a second meeting with our parents of special education students at the end of this month. On that same night, we have a session with the parents of our talented and gifted students. And so we're looking forward to that. And then of course, we've had a number of open sessions as well. The sessions where we have, that are specialized are really so that we can increase access for those communities who may have specialized inquiries regarding their, their children that are unique because of the services that their, that their children receive or the models of learning that they are familiar with for their kids. So although anyone theoretically could come to any of these meetings, we definitely wanted to call out how those meetings will be held. So in the Spanish meetings, that means it would be translated into English rather than having it translated from English into Spanish. So I wanted to go back to the surveys and just revisit a couple of things. One of the questions we asked students in June, and we had 634 students respond, we asked them the question about what was impacting their ability to effectively take part in distance learning? If they were having challenges or if they felt barriers existed, what were those? And those are listed here, but I'll read them for you because it's written rather small. Connectivity, having a device or having internet, food insecurity, financial difficulties, job instability of themselves or of their family members, a lack of personal workspace, which is something we often don't think about, that students at home for this kind of long-term learning needed a different setup at home in order to learn. Mental health difficulties, other responsibilities just at their home. Perhaps they were watching their, their younger siblings or they had other responsibilities such as cooking dinner because parents were trying to juggle work and the, and the home schedule as well. And then having enough time to dedicate to learning, given that we were in the middle of a pandemic and it was the first time we'd all been in that situation. So you will hear me reference these items as we go through the plan. We also asked our parents or guardian and guardians about their preferred education delivery option for the fall. It's important to note a couple of things that we asked in June and we had over 2,000 participants, 2,300 parents participated in this survey. And 75% of parents pretty much said they wanted all in-person learning, if it's at all possible. And then the other, about a little under 25% said, well, a blended learning model that allows students to both go to school and also learn at home would be preferred. And then we had a small number of families who either wanted to completely learn online or planned to enroll their children in a different program. One of those programs being our own Albany Online Program. GAPS staff responses also in June, we had 436 participants and they also preferred the all-in-person learning, but not at the same, at the same rate. About 60/40 split there of wanting it in person. So remember these were in June. Now, the certified and classified unions have recently put out a survey, very recently, to their, to their memberships to try and get a feel for, has anything changed in the last month for how people are feeling about returning to work? So I want to share a little preliminary, some preliminary pieces of information. And this just happens to be only from the certified survey just because these are so new and they haven't had a chance to even collect everybody's thoughts yet. So 354 certified staff participated so far in this survey. And this was just from the last couple of days. And the, the statement was phrased differently. So how many of you would prefer to teach in person? So we had, we had about 40% of staff now who said they preferred to teach in person, whereas we had 60% a month ago. And 35% of our staff described themselves as either not at all or somewhat not at all wanting to be in person, which is, which is a different, a different path than what we had seen. Also in this survey, we asked then another question, right? The other side of that, which is, okay, I'd prefer to teach entirely online. Well, most, most staff, 50, over 50% of them don't, don't want to teach entirely online. But 35% of staff said, you know what, actually, right now I, I would prefer to teach online. So we're having this, this poll for staff that is different than how they felt a month ago. And it's not surprising because we are at a different place as a state than we were and as a country than we were a month ago. Finally, this survey, this is a really important question in the survey and I'm looking forward to seeing that the end answer for both certified and for classified staff. 350 certified members have answered this question so far, which is just a statement of, I have health concerns that put me at risk. And almost 30% of our teachers say that they have health concerns that put them at risk for COVID. That's a really important data point for us as we are planning. Because if we have a situation where a large number of our teaching staff need to be working from home due to health concerns related to COVID, then we are working with a diminished human resource capacity or a different human resource capacity in that we, those staff members would be needing to be engaging in remote learning, facilitating remote learning and not facilitating in-person learning. So one of my wonderings is when we ask our parents which model they prefer for their students, what alignment will we see between the percentage of families who are choosing a more at-home option and the percentage of staff who are feeling they need to be at home due to health concerns? So an important factor that I think is easy to overlook, I think as we look, the American Academy for Pediatrics just came out in the last week saying, absolutely, it's best for kids to be back at school. The socialization is, the lack of socialization is really hard for them right now. It's impacting their mental and emotional health, certainly, certainly impacting their academic growth. And all of which, you know, I would never argue with. I believe that that is true. The, the difficulty is schools lie at the nexus of probably the, the highest population of children and adults cohabitating a room or a building at a given time for an extended period of time. And so when we are considering what we're doing, we have to take into account both of those variables because we need our staff to stay healthy so that we can have more classes in person at our schools. Which brings us to this. I saw a, I saw an image on Facebook regarding how people are feeling about where they are in returning to school. And I really believe, and so I kind of worked from that and made it our own. But I believe that parents and staff right now have what they feel are this weird, diverse, fighting conversation within themselves. And I think that feeling is a common shared narrative. So parents and our teaching and our transportation and our technology, all of our staff, they need to work. And then they ask themselves, well, that should work be a health risk for me? And how much risk should that be? And so then they say, well, okay, so, and so at my work site, we need enough PPE or we need enough people. Well, to do that, schools need additional financial and human resources. And parents and staff alike will, will think about that and struggle with that. Then comes the question of, well, should, would, would I want to homeschool my own child? Well, I had that experience in the spring and it was really hard. And that was with the support of parents. I'm sorry, I have a cat climbing my back. So we need to remember that our staff members have children as well and they too are trying to figure out what is in the best interest of their family and their children. and they too are trying to figure out what is in the best interest of their family and their children. Teachers are wondering, how do we teach in person and online at one time? How does that even work? How, we don't know yet how to make that work. Some of us might know how, but a lot of us don't know how. And how are you going to teach us? We only have four days before the school year starts and only two of those days are for learning. Socialization assist, mental health is really important for all of us to be around each other, the adults to be around each other, the kids to be around each other. And then the next children and staff need to be safe. So at what risk do we take that? And so I thought this was a really powerful image and it said different things in the bubbles, but I thought it was a really powerful way of thinking because we are all going back and forth and struggling with these different, these different questions. And it's really important to recognize that our education force, our education workforce is asking these same questions because they too are parents or they too are neighbors or they too are grandparents. And so it's a more complex conversation, this conversation that sometimes I think we, we realize or laypeople may realize. So this is basically the triangle of three that we've been talking about within the school district. We have three places where we can help control the safety of our staff and our students. So one is social distancing, one is face coverings, and then the other is hygiene. And we follow the Oregon Department of Education and the Oregon Health Authority for guidance on, on those things. And here, here's kind of a list of what they say. Have limited cohorts of kids and small class sizes. Have outside activities and physically distance. Make sure everybody keeps their hands clean and make sure the buildings are really clean and clean frequently. Wear face coverings. And so then the question is, well, where do you wear face coverings? And ODE is specific about where face coverings are required, like bus drivers have to wear face coverings. And where face coverings may be optional. And, and that's where we look at students depending on, on their age group. And, and actually, ODE talks about it being optional for all students right now at this time. Now here's the reality with the triangle. Whenever we are unable to meet these bigger pieces that help us control the risk, then we need to look at the other two parts of the triangle. So for example, we know limited cohorts, the, limiting the number of people who come into contact with each other each day. So the same group of kids stays together all day long and the same teacher stays with that group all day long. That is the strictest kind of cohort that you can have. Small class sizes also help. So class sizes are small and classrooms are big, we have more space in between everybody. Now, what if you're at a high school and you have a need to have students change classes? So they're in English and social studies and science. And so they are taught by different teachers. Now, there are two ways to do that. The students can move and that means that they're going to be around a whole bunch of different students. Or the teachers can move and that means the teachers themselves are exposed to more students. Regardless, teachers will be exposed to a higher number of kids in that model. When that happens, we have to then see where we can tighten up elsewhere. So in this example, face coverings is one place where we could then tighten up. So if we are going to have teachers and students at a level such as high school together in, in larger cohorts, so being exposed to, up to a higher number of people, then we need to talk about, well, then who should be wearing face coverings in order to stay safe? And we'll, we're constantly in our conversations about health and safety, which you'll hear about at your work session at the end of the month, constantly. Where one, where one area of the triangle shrinks, the other two areas of the triangle grow. An update on transportation and food service. So we have a real challenge with transportation because there are requirements that ODE has. One is that the drivers need to visually screen for symptoms for all the students, each of the students who get on the bus each day. If a student is showing symptoms of COVID, runny nose, they have a little cough, they look maybe a little bit sweaty and their temperature might be high, they need to sit in a designated seat at the front of the bus that is reserved for students who are showing symptoms. All drivers must wear some sort of facial covering, so either masks or face shields. And we need to keep the passengers, the first group of students, six feet behind the bus driver. So those are the requirements for transportation. There are a number of recommendations that also come from ODE regarding transportation, one of which is ideally you would have a three-feet radius around every student. Well, on our buses that serve 84 students, we would only be able to transport about a third of our students each time if we were to do that three-feet radius. So remember going back to our triangle of three. So if we cannot meet the recommendation of a three-foot radius, which again is just a recommendation, then what can we do on the buses to help keep students safe and still, and ha, and still be able to meet the schedules that we need and get kids to and from school? So one, this, this is one of the reasons the transportation question is set piece. So we know how many kids are on, are going to be on each shift of the bus and how tightly we need to have each of those other, other areas grow. So for example, on all of our buses, we will have hygiene stations. So as kids get on the bus, they will be sanitizing their hands. If we end up needing to have passengers within three feet of space from each other on our buses, then our kids will need to be wearing masks on buses, even if they're little kids, which we would really prefer not to have. And they don't need to be masked, they just need to be facial coveries, so they can be shields. We haven't made that decision yet, so please don't jump to that conclusion. I'm just saying those are, that, these are the types of considerations that we are having to negotiate as we figure out what, what school's going to look like in the fall. Food service, similar to the spring, meal services will be provided to all K-12 students regardless of which learning option they select. It will be contactless meal service. And, and it's important for you to know, for parents to know that students are not going to be intermixing in buildings. We're going to try and limit that as much as we can. So meals will most likely for, whether you're a kindergarten student or a senior in high school, be eaten in a classroom. So again, going back to the cohort model and trying to minimize the interaction between students outside of that cohort. Another piece of, another barrier that was mentioned by students, a struggle that they had in the spring was around technology and connectivity. We really did push out a lot of technology in the spring, but we've pushed out more since and will continue to do so. We've identified the learning equipment that we'll be using for this school year and school years in the future. And we encourage families who can afford to purchase on their own to please do so. If you can't, that is not a problem. Just request it from the school and the school during, during registration and we'll be sure to get you your own. So for kindergarten and first grade students, they, those students will be using Chrome tablets. And second grade through 12th grade students will be using Chromebooks. Now, many of those students already have their Chromebooks that we checked out to them in the spring. So they'll just keep their Chromebooks that they already have. In the spring, however, we did not do a one-to-one ratio as we handed out those Chromebooks. And so if you had a family with three students, you may have been struggling for computer time. Kids may have been competing for Chromebook time. We really need to eliminate that because of the scheduling that you're about to see. And so it's going to be important that every student has their own Chromebook. And, and so if, if you need to, you need to let the school know that you need to. If you have any connectivity needs at home, I'm going to ask you to see the district message on the options for internet service support that's on the district webpage. And I think that Andrew Tomsky can probably put a link to that in the chat that you're, as you're viewing the presentation right now. This will also, this presentation will also be posted and the link is embedded in the PowerPoint. Remember, students will be taking these, students will be taking their technologies to and from school every day, like they do a textbook. So it, it needs to be a tool. I've had parents ask about laptops and you will see on our, on our page link that yes, as long as the laptop meets certain specifications, kids can bring those instead of a Chromebook. I just know that some parents would prefer their child not take a expensive laptop that is really tough to, tough to replace. They'd prefer a less expensive Chromebook because those will be in kids' hands going back and forth in their backpacks every day. So here's the plan. We have multiple pathways that, oh goodness, sorry, I have to verify. Oh goodness. Well, perhaps, I don't think it's going to show my password, but this is a little odd. If our members have any questions while I'm doing this, that would be great.
Can students still bring their cold lunch, sack lunch?
Absolutely. Good question.
The checking of students as they get onto buses, that be the job of the bus driver? Or will there be somebody there who isn't occupied with driving a large vehicle?
We haven't, so we haven't decided that yet. That's a great question. One of the things we're looking at is the cost of sending another adult rider on the bus with students and, and whether that's a feasible option for us. So we're looking into that right now. Are you able to see the graphic that's on my screen right now? I can't see you nodding, but I think you must be because I think you would have said no.
Yes, it's, it's visible.
Thank you. All right. So, so right now we're looking at really three different pathways for any student within our system. And I'm going to walk you through this visual. I'm going to zoom in so that it's easier to see and walk you through each, each option. So kind of starting left to right. The, the first option for our kids is, whoops, sorry, is, starts at K-2. And what we believe, and this goes back to some of the priorities that have been shared with us by family members and, and, and the staff as well. What we believe is that the most important kids to have in school the most frequently are our youngest students. That's for many reasons. What we know is kids are learning numeracy, literacy skills and behavioral relational skills that, that are essential, building blocks for all of the work they're going to do in the future. And if, if we are unable to build those, that, those skillsets for students right at the very beginning, it will create problems for them that will compound over time. What we also know is that those particular skills are better learned in person. So when kids are learning their numeracy skills, it's really good for them to be doing that with their hands and actually holding on to blocks and, and different manipulatives in order to learn. We also know with literacy skills, it's really important for our teachers to be able to see how students are articulating their letters. And that is much, made much more difficult when you are having a conversation with kids over Zoom. So we have, we are prioritizing right now that at least our kindergarten through second grade students would be in school Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday in in-person classes. On Wednesday, they would be engaging in independent learning that we've designed as homework for them at home or they'd be receiving specialized services. It's really important as we look at each of these models to remember that there are certain classrooms that, that will continue to function and will likely be close to, if not full-time programs. So our behavior, our functional skills classrooms or behavior skills classrooms, those classrooms with specialized service for students with special needs who definitely need more time. We have not, we are not reassigning those teachers into different roles. So they are able to continue to have those classrooms function. Those classrooms generally have far fewer students assigned. So the proximity issues, the questions about social distancing are not the same as what we would see in the general education environment. So, so back to specialized, specialized services. Students will be able to receive their specialized services via Talented and Gifted Services or, or Special Education Services or Speech Language Services. They'll be able to receive those in person during the school day on those four days. And they may also be in need of more time and that time would be virtual time or in-person time on Wednesdays. And so that's how that design looks. And that is how that design looks really regardless of level. Except for if, if folks are, I mean, regardless of model. If students, however, are choosing one of the models that is fully virtual, then those services will likely be fully virtual unless their individualized education plans are reliant upon some in-person time, in which case we will make sure that they have that in-person time and we'll get the kids to and from school if that's needed. So that's K-2. Any questions on K-2?
So what is the benefit of not going on Wednesday of, rather than just five days a week at that point?
Thank you so much for that question. So one of the things we know is that our, we have a finite capacity in our maintenance and custodial staff in order to keep that hygiene, that hygiene part of the triangle performing at its highest. So we need time for them to get in and deep clean schools and it cannot just be on weekends because they also have schedules where they aren't necessarily working on Saturdays or Sundays. Very few of those staff members actually work on Saturdays and Sundays. So we are instead needing to look at how can we do both their schedules differently, but also have some downtime where we can really feel confident that we're doing deep cleaning and leaving the space alone and before the next group of kids come. In addition, we're able to then use that time for teachers to be engaging together around instructional design as they are trying to keep students across the system moving on the same instructional modules at the same time. So, and then finally for professional learning. By, by grabbing some time on Wednesdays while those buildings are being cleaned, grabbing some time with the instructional staff, whether they are instructional assistants, educational assistants or their teachers, having them come together, we have a much better opportunity to enrich what the learning environment is going to look like for kids and to continue to have frequent check-ins with them regarding, okay, so based on what we learned last time we were together, how did the rollout go and what are you learning that needs to go differently? This is going to be our highest, this year will be our highest learning curve that we've had in my 25 years of education. And it's exciting, but the, how steep that is, is also going to be challenging. And I think this gives us an opportunity to, to do that. And then it also affords that opportunity for specialized services that students may not get as much of during the other schedule.
So I, I agree with you on several points and, but I do come from a customer service background. And it, it kind of reminds me when I was on the board for the carousel. And the carousel used to be closed on Mondays for cleaning and maintenance. And I said, okay, so we're paying all of our staff to be there, but we're not open making any money because we're closed for maintenance. Coming from a place like Les Schwab, they have maintenance time and training time too. But that would never, ever cut into a customer's, you know, open Monday to Friday, eight to five. It would never cut into a time that would affect a customer. It's always done after hours. A lot of janitorial staff work after hours already.
Yeah. So let's go back to two things. One is that, that this is a unique situation that we're doing for one year. Remember that as we walk through this, this isn't a long-term proposal. This is a one-year proposal during a global pandemic. So that is different. The other piece that's unique is that we also need to negotiate changes to our contracts with our labor units. So that if we were going to change schedules, for example, and have our staff work on Saturdays who have not who have not had to work on Saturdays before, that would be something that would be a bargainable issue that we would need to discuss with the union. So at this point in time, we are, are not in a position to do that. The board could decide to ask the union to go to the bargaining table on some issues related to how we implement. Also, the unions can come to us as well and say, we want, we want to demand bargain because we feel that working conditions have changed. So when you change the basic working conditions that have been agreed to in the contract, then you need to go back and bargain. And so yes, I hear what you're saying and that would be an issue that we would bring to bargaining.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm not trying to compare us to a tire shop, but I'm talking about customer service and the 1,000 kindergarteners, first graders and second graders that we're dealing with. 1,000 kindergarteners, first graders and second graders that are going to have to find a place to go on Wednesdays. Parents are at their, at their odds right now trying to find places to stash their kids. And that, that's one of the reasons we need to be open is for their education, for their educational purposes and a place to go. And I know you realize that. I do think professional development is important. We're asking our staff to do things they've never done before. But we've all, we've all done less or, you know, more with less and we've, we've shot from the hip quite a bit. I'm, I'm telling you, there's, there's over a thousand students in that category that we need to consider first.
So thank you. I appreciate that, that perspective. And as we look at the 9,200 students across the system and the, um, the opportunities that, that we are able to provide, we really wanted to prioritize K two time. We recognize that as a system, our responsibility is around education. As a community, our responsibility is childcare and how we take care of each other. And I'll talk about that a little bit in a moment because it's definitely a very real issue. It is, uh, again, part of the reason that we wanted to make sure K two students were in school as much as possible, recognizing that those are also our youngest students. So aside from the literacy and numeracy needs, they also are not students that are old enough to be left at home. Other kids older than them also are not quite of the age to be left home alone yet. But there are parents who would feel more comfortable with an older sibling and a third grader than an older sibling than a kindergartner. And we want to respect that and try to provide more supports for our families in that way. So the, um, the, so that's kind of the norm in-person model for K two. That's the norm model. For grades three through 12, the most typical norm model would be considered, would be called the in-person rotation model. This is unique for us at GAPS. It's different than what I've seen other districts designing in that four days a week, at least, there will be staff members engaging with students. Two days a week, students will physically be in class. Two days a week, they will be in guided at-home learning. And I can somehow navigate my screen here. I'll show you what that looks like. So, um, in this model, you can see that two days a week, kids will be at school. That's what these little guys are doing. And then two days a week, kids will be in their, in their homes. And there will be a staff member or multiple staff members that are working with them throughout a scheduled day. And it will be in a looser model than what you're going to be seeing in the full, full distance learning model. So this model, they'll have two days in person, they'll have two days guided at home with staff members from the schools. And they will have downtime for sure that they don't have on these in-person days, but it will not be at all what students experienced in the spring. It's very important for us to have students still engaging with adults during these two days. And also they will be engaging with students who are in the classrooms themselves. So there's opportunities in using the virtual tools that we have for students who are at home and at school at the same time to be in the same learning group at the same time. And we are putting a lot of thought into what that educational experience looks like for kids so that they have the opportunities to continue to be in touch with each other and have school staff. Remember that in all of these models, school counselors, mental health supports are still available and specialized services are still being provided. So if what the, one of these students who is in the in-person guided at-home model needs is they actually are going to need more time during, more in-person time because of their special education plan, then we would have that student, we would, we would be bringing that student to school on one of their non-in-person days, one of their guided at-home days in order to engage with a specialist at school. Or they would have the specialist working with them during their guided at-home work time. On Wednesdays, again, students would be doing independent learning that's assigned by their teachers for them to be doing. This is not workbooks like what has been done before. We are not, we are not going to be reordering workbooks. So for those, uh, parents that are concerned, I want to let you know that this is a very different approach. And, um, and so that's the in-person rotation model. So are there any questions about that model?
So what would my third grader's typical Wednesday look like then?
Um, so your third grader's typical Wednesday would likely look, I don't know your third grader personally, nor do I know what their educational needs are. So that's difficult. If you are, uh, if you have a third grader who is not in need of any specialized services, so they're not in any special program, then that third day would look like online virtual learning, uh, modules that are assigned. That may mean that there's some flipped learning where they're supposed to be watching a video or engaging with some reading that they're doing at home. That reading maybe, may not be online at all. It may be a book that they have. It may be solving math problems that they have. And then they'd be going into their Chromebook, hi, there's my cat, be going into their Chromebook and reflecting on what it is that they read or providing feedback on the math problem and, and writing out using a full complete answer, how they solved their math problems. So it will look different depending on your child and depending on their grade level. But, um, but they should be, they should still be engaged in learning. It will not though, have an adult from the school that's directly interacting with them.
So it'll be more like the spring?
Will not be like the spring. So the spring, your child, your child had a workbook that was assigned that was a canned workbook that was related to standards, but it was a summer bridge workbook. Was not designed to keep your child on track with standards and, and keeping pace with, with what they need to learn by grade level as far as that rigor is concerned. So it will, it will be much more like, um, like intentional homework that's designed by, by your teachers that you get on Tuesday. And whatever you do, when you go back to school on Thursday or you go back to school on Friday, what you were assigned on Wednesday will be essential to what you're doing in, in your in-person rotation at your next class. So you will have to be doing Wednesday work and it will be relevant and rigorous.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just curious because, yeah, you know, he's an, he's an average kid. He's got a little ADHD, but when he's sitting in my spare office at my work on Wednesdays, he doesn't have a phone a friend, he can't raise his hand if he has a question on the educational material. So the, the staff don't have office hours on Wednesdays?
So there will always be staff with office hours on Wednesdays. Thank you for asking that question. So there will always be staff available on Wednesdays to answer students' questions if they have them. They may not be by phone, but they may be engaging by internet, but absolutely. And so that too will be different.
Cause I, I can teach him how to log on to Zoom and hey, this is where you, you press if you're in third grade and you have a question.
Yeah.
I mean, he's not going to be able to send an email to a help desk saying, hey, I have a problem with, you know, page three, question nine.
We would never have a student send it to a help desk. That just won't work. It'll never, it will, it will likely not reach the teacher that it needs to reach in time for the student to have the answer for the next day's learning. So yeah, absolutely. It'll be, it'll be hooked up in a very organized way. So, um, we will have, for example, a third grade teacher who will be, will be answering the questions from third grade students. And they'll be available during a certain time of the day.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Melissa, or I'm not seeing any additional comments or people that have questions. So you should.
Thank you.
I know you're not seeing.
Thank you. I can't see you. All right. So now I'm going to go over to the two completely at-home learning models. And this certainly is a model that from what I have been hearing from parents and community members that would, that people want to have a completely online option. Now we actually are going to have two home learning models. This is different than what has been framed by many of my peers and I'm excited that we're able to offer this. So, um, uh, as you, as you look at this graphic as a whole, you've been moved from left to right. It's, you start at the highest touch and you move to the lowest touch basically from adult to student. So this, um, this interactive at-home learning model though, will still have students interacting with students, um, every day. And they will be working, um, uh, on those Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Fridays, with a teacher who is actually interacting. So let's take the third grader example again. So third graders generally are assigned in a classroom with a single teacher for most of the day. They may have one other teacher for PE or for music or perhaps for literacy, for a literacy lesson. The design would not be much different than that. All of the learning however, will be in virtual classrooms. So you can see in this graphic that there is one teacher and that teacher is working with multiple students at the same, at the same time. One of the things that's unique about this and, and one of the reasons we can do it is we are just such a great sized district. So the size of our district allows us to look at third grade and not just third grade at a single site, but third grade across our entire district and say, okay, well, how many third graders do we have who want an interactive at-home learning model? Now for every 20 to 30 students that we have who want an interactive at-home learning model, we can assign them together from across the district. They can all go to, well, they wouldn't all go to different schools because we don't have 30. But they can be from many, many different schools. And we can have one third grade teacher because what we're doing right now is a part of this work, which is the opportunity that COVID-19 brings to us, is we are really aligning what we are teaching across our entire system so that students who are in one school and students who are in another school are really learning aligned work using similar or the same tools. So that's what will happen here. The other reason that note is really important is that these students, as COVID-19, as things start to come under control or as families start to become more confident or more comfortable with their child returning to a regular school environment, then the student can very seamlessly move from the interactive at-home learning model into the, either the in-person rotation model if they're older or if they're younger into the, a fully in-person model because those students will be learning at the same pace as their peers. Remember that during that in-person rotation model, kids are actively learning all days of the week. So they are not just learning the two days that they are in class. They will have new learning created, um, new understandings created through their engagements on those other times at home as well. So we're able to keep all of our kids on the same trajectory of learning.
Melissa, excuse the interruption. This is, this is Jennifer. You said that, uh, so students that may initially opt for the interactive at-home learning model, could later in the year transition back into the in-person rotational. Is the opposite true? The opposite is true. Okay.
Yeah, absolutely true. What, where the, um, the barriers to that, right, the, the, one of the, one of our opportunities, I would rather say, is to see how flexible we can be with student numbers. So if we have, if we have an imbalance of student numbers at the student's homeschool, for example, they may need to wait a bit before they go back into the in-person rotation model in order for us to be able to include them because we'd need to have certain numbers in order to move a teacher from the K-12 interactive learning model over to that school if another teacher was needed.
Yeah, I just, um, I think of a scenario like perhaps if a family unfortunately, you know, does test positive with, with COVID-19 and the family as a whole needs to, needs to quarantine. And so those, those kids, assuming they felt well enough to participate, could do so with the interactive model.
Yes.
Yeah, great. Okay, thank you.
And this is Kim. Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say they may decide to continue the in-person rotation model because one of the things that we are working on right now is getting cameras into classrooms so that teachers are able to remotely, um, kids who are homesick for whatever reason can tune into the class that they're missing that day.
So that might go to some of my questions. I, this model seems very clear when you're talking about the younger grades and, and stuff. But when you look at a high school scheduling scenario. So, um, one of the questions I had was, will it limit choices then for students as far as like specialty elective? So for example, you have a specialty choir that you participate in. That's only one class and it's one group of people. And you have half of those students decide they want to do online learning and half of those students are wanting to do something different. Will they have to do a certain one or will that particular class then be available virtually at the same time that it's available by the same instructor?
So remember when I said I'm going to have a lot of answers that are going to lead to more questions?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One of those. So this is one part of the, the refining of the puzzle, right? How do we, how do we make this work, particularly as you go up in age groups? We have these fantastic learning spaces at middle school and at high school that are unique to the crafts that they are teaching. How do we make sure that kids are still able to access those music band, et cetera? And so we are working on that. We're working on it from, from many different angles. Our goal would be that a student's desire to stay engaged in those other high interest parts of learning are still able to do so. One of the challenges for us, just a practical challenge would be transportation. So if you are choosing, um, if you are choosing an at-home learning model, what does the transportation look like to get you to and from school? So, um, but we're working on that. We don't have an answer, but we are trying to eliminate barriers wherever we can.
And I was thinking also in lines of like our CTE programs where you might have one where it's all hands-on. You know, you're doing woodworking or you're doing, you know, those types of things. And your student is choosing to do the interactive at-home learning model. Is that even a choice for them, for those, if they choose to have that class? Is that a class they would actually have to go to school for? And then everything else could be interactive. And we've just done so much work to develop all those programs, but many, many of those are things they have the hands-on piece. They're not going to have the tools and they're not going to have everything at home. So, um, I was just curious if that limits then their ability to take those classes or, or can they then go only for that one class and that sort of thing? Which it sounds like, I know there's a lot more coming, but I appreciate the fact that there's, there's still more to talk about.
But yeah, so we're, we are definitely thinking about how do we, how do we make it work for all kids? And how do we, um, and how do we make it work for staff members? So can you imagine being the, um, being a teacher who teaches a highly specialized technical area such as that? And all you've ever taught is hands-on because by its very nature, it's hands-on. And you come back before the school year and you have two days of professional development to learn how to change your completely hands-on class to something that is interactive at home. That's a big challenge. So again, um, just another plug. I would say for more opportunities for teachers to be able to learn, how do they, how do they transfer the skills and the opportunities for kids? If, if it's not an option for kids and if some of those options, sometimes there won't be an option for a student because of their own health risk areas. And, um, and so how do we, how do we mitigate the shortcomings within the system so that they're able to take full advantage of the richness that we offer in Greater Alvin? So that they're able to take full advantage of the richness that we offer in Greater Albany.
Director Eastman has a question.
Superintendent, as you might guess, well, and you did state it, that, um, this is going to create more questions possibly than there are answers for tonight. For that matter, there may be more questions than there are answers for the rest of this year. Look, I, I was wondering while I was sitting here trying to wrap my head around this absolutely incredibly complex issue. And, and all of the questions that are going to come up and, and all of the people that are involved. I mean, it, it is just going to be an extremely difficult task, but I know, I know we'll pull it off. I know it will work. So I don't have any concern there. My thought is though, has there been any discussion at the state level and/or possibly local level? At the end of last year, um, there was just kind of a stasis put on, uh, the year, uh, the day that classes ceased in, in school classes. You know, there was a, a modicum of, of stuff that the children could do during the year, which I know had value, although it just didn't have quite as much value as it would have had were they in class. So there was kind of a stasis put then, a, a, just kind of a shell put over it for that year. And, and since we're in an adaptive process to try to figure out how to reinvent education, is that same kind of thought process that was in place at the end of last year been brought forward in any shape or form to try to give parents the, the thought of value for this year? And, and I pray like everyone else, that this will not be the educational model for the 21, 22 year. But, um, is there any kind of thought there? Because obviously the, the product is going to be different. What the students are going to receive is going to be different than it would have been had none of this other stuff taken place. So I, I know that's a kind of a convoluted question, but I'm trying to, trying to figure out how, parents and patrons can come to an understanding or thought about what, what will this year really represent for their children? End of the.
So I would answer that in two ways, Director Eastman, and thank you for acknowledging that, yeah, probably more, more questions than we can answer for the entire year. So two pieces. One is I want everybody, as they look at this map, this roadmap that we're creating, to recognize that some of this roadmap should have been built by, uh, teaching and learning across the United States years ago. And the fact that we haven't adapted, uh, to, to how the rest of the world has adapted. Um, and by the world, I just mean every other, um, every other group, uh, employment group has adapted to the, the tools and the skills that are today's issues that are so very different than those from the 1800s. And yet we still have this, this 1800s based model. We have an opportunity to learn a great deal. So one is around, how could we better use the tools that are available to bring us together? Rather than have them, um, tearing us apart through, we see a lot of bullying, for example, on social media. How do we shift kids from looking at, um, uh, that as the way to engage with each other? To actually, um, engaging with each other virtually through, through these types of tools that we're using right now in a helping collaborative way. So I think we're going to have some outcomes that will happen forever and we will be glad that they've changed. I think the way we look at time and the instructional day will also probably be forever changed. Not that I don't want anyone to panic and think we would only have school, uh, on four days of the week. But I do believe that we could have more learning options available to families than what we've had in the past. Because we do have families who would prefer to have their children living at home. And, um, we, aside from Albany Online, haven't had a robust program there. So I think that will be one. The other thought is equally important is that the focus for us in Greater Albany is acceleration. So there is a great, um, there is a great research paper by an organization that we're working with, TNTP, and we've talked about them before. And they are working with us to help design what our fall looks like. And their research centers on what's known as the opportunity myth. So when you read that research paper, I can somewhere for you real quick. You need to accelerate in this moment, not remediate. And so if we look at what we're going to be doing this fall through the lens of, well, we have to start out by teaching the last three months of last year, those kids will never, we will never catch up our kids. But if we really look at what are those key, um, think cursory competencies that students have missed in order to access their next grade level of learning? If we look at those, then those are what we, what we focus on and we focus on those as an embedded part of their learning during this grade level. So, um, there is a real opportunity for us to also learn how to look at students and, um, patching them up differently and taking a different approach. And I believe that in the long run, we will be, as a system, our ability, our ability to accelerate students, regardless of where they are in their learning pathway, rather than spending as much time focused on as we tend to do on remediation. And I think that's an essential lesson. So, um, those are, those are a couple of key takeaways. And I think it's going to be a very valuable time for their kids.
Thank you. And that, that all makes sense to me. And one thing that I would like to mention is that we saw a, an incredible flexibility developed in the business community. Beginning of, uh, the pandemic. And I, uh, commend you for, for taking the presentation to, um, the street, so to speak, tomorrow, uh, to the chamber. And I, I think that's going to, is going to give lead time to, uh, the business community that there's going to have to be flexibility created. Because obviously, parents are going to become flexible in different ways than they have ever in the past. And early on in the pandemic, the business community, um, became very flexible and all kinds of different things popped up. With daycare centers and, and extra pay and a lot of those kinds of things. I know that are not sustainable, but nonetheless, they are things, they are part of this, this entire picture that, that we're trying to, to paint and create. And, uh, so it'd be very interesting to see, um, how that all takes shape as well. Thank you.
Agreed.
Superintendent, I have to ask this question. I'm sure you guys have thought about it. So we're going to have staff without positions most likely next year, um, because of their program. But it'll be interesting to see how we do some of our programs virtually. But we also have two empty elementary schools. Meadow Ridge has a third grade wing. Timber Ridge has a third grade wing. You know, two years ago, we put K through four at North Albany Elementary from Oak Grove. Is there any way to include third or fourth grade into that four-day-a-week model?
So that's a great question and observation. And actually for the K-2 model that I've described for you now, we are needing to pull every instructional support person into the classroom. So those folks that you were thinking perhaps wouldn't have as significant a role. When we look at our elementary staffing, um, we are reassigning staff who, um, have, uh, who are currently enrolls that have not been in the gen ed classroom in order to make that happen. And we are using every available space at every school site in order to make that happen as well. Some of our classes will be held in the gymnasiums, for example. We, um, you will see where we talk about, um, uh, our two schools that are no longer occupied and an opportunity that we see there. We considered that actually to send all of our kindergarten classes to those two sites and decided that it's really in the best interest of the kids to stay with their, um, school site. But we are looking at it for partnerships for childcare.
So Melissa, I don't see any extra questions right now. I just had a quick question for you before we keep going more agenda related. We normally leave a little bit of a break time since we've been doing our virtual meetings. And I know this is a longer topic for the day. Do you want to go ahead and continue, um, through this entire topic? I'm not sure what it'll take long. Okay.
I don't think it will take long because Albany Online is familiar and then I just have a couple more slides.
So for the rest of the group, we'll plan to do that as soon as this particular section is over then. Thank you.
Thank you for, for your patience as I work through. So then the last option, and this is a K, remains a K-12 option. And we have a number of families who have already enrolled in Albany Online because they want a more self-paced option for students. This is our lowest touch option, meaning that there is not as much teacher guidance, uh, associated with what happens in Albany Online. You don't have as many teacher interactions with students that are related to direct instruction. So students do all their work online. It's a specifically designed curriculum that is an online prepackaged curriculum. So whereas in our other models, those are coming from teacher design. These are purchased off the shelf online curricula. And there are opportunities for checking with staff, but it's, it's a pretty independent way of learning. And that again, is available K-12. So that brings us to, excuse me. I don't know if you can see my cat continuing to enter the frame, but it's certainly disconcerting. All right. So, uh, quickly, we've been doing a lot of equity centered efforts as well during this planning and modeling where we're in a lot of conversations. We're trying to communicate out with our community, particularly our communities of color, ours, uh, special education communities, and finding opportunities to partner. So you can see that here on this list. We also have been consistently desegregating all of our surveys by race, language and specialized program. So we can see the difference between how parents of talented and gifted students answer a question and parents of students who are not talented and gifted. And what that does is just helps inform what those different needs may be based on the student population. The other effort that I wanted to point out and really highlight is we have a group of K through five leaders, teachers and administrators who have been reviewing, um, a potential supplementary, our potential supplementary literacy resources that we are looking at to use this next year. Um, and they've been using an equity lens to review that. And, uh, they stepped away from their first publisher review, having looked at each grade level and all of the literacy titles, um, not just the title. When I say that, I mean the entire little book. And their feedback was so, um, so striking that, uh, it really, I think, set a tone for how we'll continue to look at curricula in the future. So, uh, finding things such as on the covers at, at one grade level, on the covers of the books, you would see, um, differently abled people, you would see students of different races. But for the entire grade level inside the books, there was not a single, uh, person of color represented within the books for an entire grade level. Things that were just kind of stunning. So that seemed that the publishers were, uh, trying to present in a certain light, but deliver much, much less. And, and actually deliver in some cases, some very damaging narratives. Narratives about, there's, there's one grade level where every single text that's about kind of a fairy tale. It's a, it's a woman being rescued. A man never needs rescuing, whether it's a fairy tale or whether it's kind of a real life story that they captured. So there was some concern about that. There is a concern, uh, about a certain story that's in the fifth grade text that, um, uh, portrays a, uh, two boys during, um, during the times that slaves were owned. And the white boy gets injured and he is rescued by, um, his slave. And then later the white boy asks for his slave to be freed because his slave had done this good thing. With an equity lens on, one of the questions you ask is, why would a person need to do this tremendously good thing in order to live free and have liberty? So, um, very, uh, concerning narratives that were within the texts. And I was, um, super pleased at how the gravity at which, uh, our staff tackled all of those. So childcare, we've mentioned it off and on tonight, and this is a community issue. I really want to emphasize this. It's hard to say because, because kids are in school five days a week. I think during the, during the school year, uh, for five days a week. I think we sometimes forget that the, the intention of school is for teaching and learning for our children. In terms of making sure that children have the care that they need on those times when they're not at school, that is a community issue and needs a community-based solution. It is just like during the summer months where, where childcare is a community issue, needing a community solution. So it is right now, in this moment for Greater Albany. We need to be coming together. And what we're trying to do as a district is provide a lot of supports to help that happen. One of them is four days a week for our K-2 students. Another is, is in our scheduling, making sure that families stay together on the days that they're, that kids are going to school. So if you have a high schooler and an elementary third grader, those two kids will be going to school on the same day and they'll be at home from school on the same day. Trying to create as many opportunities as we can for flexibility for you with different options. That said, it still is not enough to meet truly, and we know this, to meet the childcare needs either of our parents who are not our staff members or our parents who are our staff members. And so we are currently exploring, as I said earlier, I referenced Boys and Girls Club a little bit, exploring new models for how our existing partnerships could look. Are there ways for satellite programs beyond the school day, for example? Are there opportunities for, um, for Wednesday care to look a certain way or have opportunities at certain school sites? Looking at new partnerships and whether or not there are, uh, there are childcare, partners that we haven't yet worked with, who would be interested in working with us. Part of that solution goes to looking at, uh, Fur Grove and, Fur Grove and Clover Ridge and those spaces that, uh, now are available and looking at how can we invite folks in? It's, we have the space if you have the service. And so how can we work with you in order to make that happen? We also are seeking community collaboration. I, uh, talked to the city manager briefly last week about our needs for collaboration, both in childcare and transportation. He was very responsive and, and is very supportive. Talked to Janet Steele, who's the head of our chamber around, um, really needing business to understand those creative solutions, Director Eastman, that you were just referencing. Are those same things we are hoping our local businesses will continue to engage in? So if your staff are able to work from home, telecommute for the days of the week that their children are not attending school, you are helping that staff member in so many ways and you're certainly helping us as, as your school district. And realistically, a lot of our businesses are finding that their, their employees do not need to be onsite in order to be productive and, um, high contributors to, to the work. And so I really encourage our business community to look hard at business practices and see what benefits they have reaped from COVID-19 coming into play and that flexibility they've been able to show their employees and see if that might be able to be, uh, more sustainable. And then finally, um, I, I would suggest that we need to be thinking about neighbors helping neighbors. Is there a way for, um, if, if you are in a neighborhood where you are allowing your two children to play with the next door neighbor, only their two children, is there a way for you and your next door neighbor to coordinate and work together around, um, helping each other with childcare on days, perhaps alternating so that, um, neither of you are needing to stay home for as many days from work? I just do not believe that we're going to be able to do this on our own. I believe we do this together and I believe one of the opportunities that this pandemic gives us is this opportunity to see that we actually are a community and remember who our neighbors are and remember, um, the trust that, um, generation after generation has had within their local neighborhoods. And, um, so I'm, I'm just really encouraging that and open to that. And then finally, I just wanted to say that the K, the support services, the continuum of support services that you're used to seeing for your students will still be there. So as I said, we'll still be working with after-school programs as allowable by cohort size and approved by the state. When it's allowable, we're going to still have kids in athletics and activities. And again, that's, that's measured by the Oregon Health Authority and the Oregon, um, State Athletics and Activities Association. So right now, um, we are waiting to see what fall sports will finally look like. Our student services are still available. Our welcome center is standing ready to serve. They are still open and, and, um, completely willing to, to help you and are translating, I'm sure, for us tonight. They are still open and, and completely willing to, to help you and are translating, I'm sure, for us tonight. Lynn County Mental Health has been extremely responsive in finding new and creative ways for, for kids to have tele, tele mental health appointments so that kids can actually talk to their mental health provider via Zoom, which is extremely beneficial, particularly during these times. And we are discussing what are some other ways that we can partner. As we know, we are not, no longer able to afford to put those counselors into the elementary schools that we had thought we were going to be able to do when we first had the student investment account approved. We now know that our dollar situation has changed dramatically for all education agencies within our state and really across the U.S. And given that we're not going to be able to hire new counselors and mental health providers, how can we partner with Lynn County around what they are able to provide and what services can we get to our younger students? All of those programs will continue, including our, our services for our homeless students. And then those services that every kid really wants. So I want to be able to talk to my counselor. Great. Your counselor is not going to be assigned to a classroom, your counselor is still going to have a schedule that they are designing themselves, so they will be able to work with you. And they may work with you as a student in small groups. And they may spend some time just talking to you and your parent or just, or just you, depending on the, the subject area. Our special education services will continue. And frankly, I think that there is an opportunity for our special education services to be more flexible and more responsive than they've ever been in this model. Our talented and gifted services will continue. And as I said, when I was talking about acceleration for student, we are really focusing on acceleration for every single student. And so how do we make that happen for our talented and gifted students in ways that perhaps we have been less successful in doing in, in years past? And just continuing to use all those tools that we have available. So thank you for letting me go into such depth on these topics. I appreciate it greatly, and I hope that it's been helpful to you as board members to understand here's what the structure is going to look like. And I'm, I'm excited to continue the conversation with our families and staff.
So I, I think I see Director Ward might have a question.
Yes, Director Ward has just a few things to say, and I make them brief because I know that we're due for a, for a break. Melissa, beautifully presented. This is just such an enormous lift that even as you tell me about it, I can hardly wrap my mind around it. And I mean, I know, I know that, that what you and your staff did together for our students and our staff this fall is, is not going to be a perfect fit for every single family in every single situation. I know that we're going to continue to have questions probably even into the school year and that the answers to those questions will evolve. But really, this is just an enormous amount of, of work and effort. And you've thought of things that I hadn't even considered. And I'm just really so impressed and grateful to you and, and our staff. Thank you. So just a few couple of things, and maybe you noted this earlier. Will there be any in-person registration like there's been in the past?
I did not note that. I do not know. So we're going to do Regstar, and that's going to inform us a little bit on some things. And, and no, I don't know yet if we'll do in-person registration. Again, it is a coordination conundrum for us, so trying to find unique ways for us to do that.
Great. Okay. Also, I just wanted to say thank you for scheduling the additional focus groups for our special ed families and our, and our tag families and students. And the feedback that I've gotten, those are the two groups that are our most, that I'm hearing are most concerned about the fall. And so I think taking the extra time to address those concerns and to receive feedback from them is, is just a good call. So thank you. I'm going to try to attend at least one of those. And then unrelated, well, related but unrelated, is the Chamber of Commerce meeting, is that available? Available virtually if we want to attend? How, how, how's the chamber doing it these days?
It's a Zoom presentation, but the limitation of 100 people figured in. And as I understand at noon today, that 100 person roster was full.
Okay, I see. Well, I'm sure we will be presented well. Good luck. Thank you. That's all that I have.
I'm sure it won't be the only opportunity for sharing at the business level, so.
Pat, hopefully they can stream it on Facebook like the city does, the city councils.
Well, city council, that's, that's, everybody joins. That, that's a completely different format than what we have and what, what we do like for. Yeah, it's so.
But you, they still stream it on Facebook, though. They can stream their Zoom, so you can at least watch.
But you can suggest that to Jen.
Yeah, I'll go over it to call.
So Director Eastman, did you have any additional questions or comments? I'm going to go around the group again, just on this particular topic, since it was so meaty of a conversation, too.
Other than I, and I share all of the sentiments that, that Director Ward have mentioned. You know, I, I'm thinking everybody's probably getting the same thought I am. I, public education probably will never look the same then from when I grew up and, and when everybody else went to public school. But I think that the silver lining that I hope comes out of this, and Superintendent Goff mentioned that, was that we should have been planning for this. We, we were not. And it's not just us. It's, you know, much deeper than, than Albany. But what I think the silver lining is going to be is we're blazing a trail now that we'll be able, we'll, we'll leave a roadmap. So when we, God forbid, we ever have to do this again, but if we do, we will have a model that will be somewhat reusable at some level. There will be some of us left around that said, well, yeah, we did that once already. We can do it again. So I, it, it's just incredibly difficult to do anything the first time. And I think we've done a wonderful job with, with creating something out of whole cloth, but congratulations, you've done a wonderful job.
And Director Aganaga, additional comments, nothing? Vice Chair Thompson?
Yeah, you know, before she left us, and she hasn't left us, she's still around, Lisa Shogren, the former principal at Central Tekeena, told some of us parents that the way to look at this is to focus or said, we can't focus on what was. We're good, if we focus on what was, we'll be missing the opportunities of what is. And that's all I saw tonight is, is opportunities, and I love to hear that some of the parts of it will be more rigorous than last spring. So I, you know, I saw nothing but opportunities and, and just great work. And there'll be more questions on the 27th and as we move on.
Thank you. And I just had a couple of questions that I know have been asked of me in the last week or so from some folks. And I just wanted to throw these out there and then a couple based on today's presentation. So I also will try to keep these brief. What, one thought came to mind was about physical education. I know you mentioned the kind of the sports things are still in limbo, which may look very different also. Will physical education be able to continue? Because I know we've got teachers in that area that teach all day long. Will they be able to try to do those for the folks that are choosing to go online? Or what does that look like?
Yeah, so we are planning for those older kids to, to absolutely still have PE. And, and we're actually looking at how do we make sure the younger kids can as well. So it's a, it's a, what we would prefer is that our music teachers and our PE teachers are continuing to teach music and PE rather than being pushed into classrooms. So we're looking at other ways to make that work.
And then what about some of the things that are larger activities? I know you mentioned like clubs and that sort of thing, but I was thinking more of your assemblies, all school kind of get togethers, things that really help define a school as a school and a unit as a unit, you know, kind of a thing throughout the year. And it gives them some of that camaraderie building. Will there, or have they talked about or thought about how they're going to do some of those types of things going forward as well? And I also think of things like at South Albany High School, when you have the, the specialty, you know, you've got RISE classes or you have, you know, different things going on. I know with, they've done a lot with Avid. There's a lot of students in Avid, right? How are they going to continue that when that's been typically kind of a class or part, partially during the day for those students if you've got people doing various things, so.
So that was kind of multiple things, but what I'll say is that as we look at especially classes such as Avid, we're, our intention is to still have all of those supports for kids that are already in place. So when we look at flight time and we look at dog, 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 what, dog?
Dog teams.
I think it's.
I wanted to say dog sled. That's wrong. Dog teams. There you go. Dog teams. Those are still going to continue. So we are still looking at, at those pieces, partly for exactly that reason that you're talking about Chair Buzner. When we look at the larger collection, I think that's going to be an opportunity for creativity and new traditions. And I think we are up to that task. I think that, you know, what I want to say before I hit the end here is this work was not done by me really at, at all. I have great staff, a couple of whom are on this call right now. And, and Chris, who you can't see, but Andrew Tomsky too. Andrew has coordinated all of those community meetings and did the graphic for us. And, and then Lisa's entire team and, and, and Russ's teams are working so hard constantly and thinking of every angle and pushing each other to think about what's not working. And, and us coming together as an instructional and operations team in our cabinet has been a part of that success because we're, we think very differently. Our brains each work differently. And so there's a lot of, did you think about what the buses would do? And people on the other side of the table going, huh? So, yeah, so I just want to say this is, I get to deliver a great message because I work with great people.
And I, and exactly, I think we applaud you for that. That's been, it's been very apparent. And I think you even said earlier today that it's changing every day and every couple of days because those meetings are happening so frequently and fast and furious to try to get everything up and running that what you presented tonight, even by the end of this week, will, you know, have more answers and more information for it. So we appreciate that for sure. Yeah. Two other real quick questions. The two days a week, if someone chooses, and I think we talked about this earlier, but I don't know if it was mentioned tonight. If somebody is scheduled for those two days a week of in-person learning, will there be an opportunity for people to kind of select what two days a week that is happening? And I think we talked about they were probably going to be scheduled based for kind of the older and maybe grade based, so.
So right now, what we are trying to do is schedule for kids in, in 312 who are on that rotation schedule for everyone in a family to be on the same rotation. And that's for many practical reasons. It's for family reasons and it's for transportation reasons. And perhaps flexibility will be available in the future. But right now, what I would want families to prepare for is you probably will not be selecting which days your family unit will be going because we will be looking at that through the transportation lens as well to keep folks in, in areas together.
With maybe a little bit of flexibility, probably at the high school level because those schedules look different, isn't it, I guess?
Yes, and remember that a lot of our high school kids get to school themselves.
Great. I think that was it for questions from everyone. Thank you so, so much for all the work that went into this and all of those that worked with you because it's, it's, as we're seeing, it's a lot of work to make it all come together. And Director Eastman said the same thing. It's, it's a massive undertaking that is going to take everyone's involvement, so we appreciate that.
Thank you. And I just want to say to the chamber, don't worry, I'll cut this way down for tomorrow.